Okay, the time is 7 o'clock. They call this meeting to order, November 24, 2013. We'll start with agenda changes. Is there any agenda changes proposed by anyone?
Yeah, I'm wondering if they're putting Director's annual review up again of the progressive court proceedings that are going on around the place. But few things that are said may be seen as, but now there are agendas which sort of is better.
And that is?
Just the completion of Director's annual review. We can do that next month.
Oh, under unfinished business?
Yeah, and exactly, it's his legacy support project.
Can I get a motion for that?
Sure. What's the motion?
Well, just to defer the completion of Director's annual review until the next meeting.
Do you want that, okay.
With the court proceedings or whatever is going on, I, you know, last time I said something, it sounded like my over laugh, there was all sorts of fuss, so we'll just wait for another month until she can defer.
The court proceedings for which one?
I don't even know if we want to talk about it.
Okay.
My person would like to get the Director's evaluation over and done.
I don't have a second, so.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Just to this month or whenever.
So, deep as it is, is that what you're saying?
You want to just defer it, right?
Just defer because it's tied?
Tied.
It's tied. You don't vote except for to break it down to.
Oh, yeah, I get to vote.
No, you should have.
But the chair gets to vote.
Okay, but then you can't break it down.
Just as a pair of order, I think Sean has all the paperwork with him. If he doesn't appear tonight, he sort of loses it, same thing. Yeah, I have no idea. Sean has all the documentation, he's going to compile it.
Oh, so you want to?
Put it all together. It doesn't matter to me, it's not my fault, but I.
I'm going to leave it on the agenda in case Sean shows up, so that we can then, at that time, we can vote. If he doesn't come, he's not here, it'll automatically knock us out, so, okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Nope. Board issues? Anybody have any issues they're going to bring up? Okay, is there a public comment? Did you want to sign us up a comment?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to go ahead?
Sure. For the record, I'm David Walton, here in Oak Harbor, and I would like to, having sat through the last meetings and been a little involved in the budget proceedings, I'd like to thank the board for the work that he's done, because I think they've done an exceptional job providing the information that has been asked of him. In most regards, obviously, there's, and I don't know if the board's planning on adopting the budget tonight, obviously, it needs to be done fairly quickly. I think that there's still some areas that could be trimmed, such as the NWAAD, and I think that that position could be facilitated by other staff. You know, again, I would like to say, you know, thank you to the board for volunteering your time to take a look at that, and let's get this district report.
Thank you.
I'm John Johnson, I did want to donate towards the thermometers for the pool. All the thermometers are in the water right now, they've been in since about 6:15, so I see as well on the agenda, so my comment was, the temperature of the surface is much colder than it is at the level where they're maintaining the temperature at three foot level, especially at the hot tub. The hot water is in at the cap level. The jets at the back level, you know, is cold water. Temperatures out there at the hot tubs 100 right now, and should be around 102, 104. The big comparison is to the old pool thermometer is in the water at the one foot level, there's a new liquid thermometer at the one foot level, and a few digital thermometers. Sometime you'll ought to take a look at them, records a look at them and see if you want to go along. With my recommendation, if you're cooling at future levels, temperatures at the one foot level, be more accurate. Also to use the new temperature, new thermometers, which are going to be possibly, again, find out, is there any disparity between the old present pool thermometer and the new ones, and then decide how you want to go for measuring pool temperature and what temperature you're going to keep the pool at. Like eight, some of the 115 people that are responsible for this, saying the water's too cold for them.
Okay. So currently, we read it at three feet? Is that true? Is there a requirement for the public health as far as their, I know when we come out, we take the temperature of the pools, we do, we're supposed to do it at arms length, is it said anywhere in the statute as how deep you're supposed to take the pool temperature?
You know, Tom, Tom has said that it's three feet, so this thing that we had, the thing attached to it, it's three feet long, they're right up, and they're measuring actually. I do know that it's at the end of that rope every time you take it, so if you've got a consistent reading.
Consistency.
With that type of thing, I don't mind a drop, and it's always at the same spot. So, and it's always 82. But, Tom's got a great point. There's a ton of people that think that pool's not warm enough. That's fact. So, it's this body's decision to make about whether we invest in raising the temp or not, and, you know, I think regardless of where you take the temperature and what difference there may be at various places in the pool, there are a lot of patrons here that pay a lot of good money to come here that aren't happy about the temperature right now, so.
Okay.
And if you look at some of the feedback that's been online, you know, especially in light of this article that was in the paper last weekend about, or actually yesterday, about potentially raising rates here, I don't mind paying more money if they just raise the temperature of the pool, I mean, that's a consistent refrain, so, that's fact, people are asking for that. You guys get to decide.
The follow-up on that, again, one of the reasons, my feeling is, again, it goes against the laws of physics, hot water should rise, but again, we have these swimmers in the top foot of the water agitating water, the aerobic people agitating it, plus we have the fans and the surface air temperature. That's my feeling, that combination synergy is what's making that top foot of water cooler at the three foot level. That was my recommendation, is if we take the temperatures from now on, at the one foot level, be more representative of what the temperature is for the public.
Okay. Trying to see where we could put that on the agenda.
Um, Terry, just to bring me up to date, I probably had a resolution of this board in response to people coming in with that petition, that we would measure things carefully for three months, and once we had that, we'd make a decision. And what it sounds like now is, is if we weren't making it, hadn't made a decision. I think we have made a decision, we've got away for three months now, and then be really serious about how we want to answer this, you know, to honor the people with the petition, and also to get facts. So, but I think this issue is not an issue for more than hearing how you're doing it, and then in three months, that's two months from now, to actually get the data in front of us and see what's happening. I think we've done it.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for the thermometers. Any more public comments? Okay, way onto minutes approval. We have three sets.
There's one thing in October 17th that I would like to ask if you could read me, if it's okay. It's on page three, the Director's Report, the second item of the Director's comments. Concerning Coach Bill Patterson's life, I really don't think we should put in there. One thing, I think if somebody says something about being in the hospital or whatever, but, you know, the serious, you know, brain condition, I don't, I don't really think that needs to be in there. I would like to see that be in there.
Okay.
If we could, please. I think that could be.
So just after surgery, and then take a floor series brain?
Yeah, recover it from surgery, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So is there anything else you noticed?
Everything's all I, that I saw.
So can I get a motion to approve the October 17th minutes? Would that change?
I would like to make a motion to approve October 17th, 2013 minutes, please.
I just have one humorous comment. On the school board of minutes, I was pretty good at the board, and said that, it said Seaman Diggle made a motion to approve minutes, states of going forward, minutes should be written in the past tense, and from then on, it's all present tense minutes. Doesn't do anything to affect the meaning of the minutes, so it's not a huge deal.
We're working on this.
Maybe we should try past tense, you know? It's sort of an ongoing commentary.
Just a comment on that, Kirk. You know, when I, I worked through that tape and then sent you my notes, yes.
I'm guessing you probably take them as I, as I send them to you, and that was a piece I had, just had registered with me, so apologize for that.
Well, that's all right, I try to edit and review a little bit, depending on the time I have, and just go through it as well and confirm that that particular tape was in pretty bad shape, though, and it was very hard to hear, and, but, I'm going to keep working at the past tense, and I second the motion for the approval of the October 17th minutes with this change.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. October 25th?
I second.
All in favor?
And for discussion real quick, these are just, since this was a budget meeting, there is one motion in here that's highlighted, and that, just to let the audience know, that's the one that dealt with the locker fee change for renting lockers. So, people who are grandfathered in there, but now it's like $25 a year unless your grandfather is an NY member, currently renting a locker. So, that was the only thing in these minutes that was part of the special meeting on October 25th that actually had a motion, everything else was for discussion. So just, I wanted to kind of throw that out there.
In my memory of the meeting, Eric was, the aquatic director's position was discussed, but my understanding was that we couldn't have appoint another full-time person right now, that we had to wait maybe for another year, and nothing against the person that's doing the job, but we just couldn't afford it, and I don't see that in minutes.
I think there was some.
There was one, there's sort of a little paragraph where it wanders off away from the actual confusion. She says what she does.
Yeah, I apparently didn't elaborate on that, using the tape, I came from notes, so, but that's a good point to bring out, and I think that's part of our budget discussions for tonight, maybe.
Because I think the direction we were given him was, hey, here's the, here's the salary of all the employees, we're not going to tell you who to cut, how to cut, the recommended, or five percent, I believe, is what we said.
Right, and recognize that he had an extra.
Really didn't add into the weeds of, you know.
That's pretty close to what I remember, except for the discussion, it's, you take the salary for a full-time employee, and it's 27 percent more for payroll, taxes, benefits, and so on, approximately, for any full-time employee, opposite high is boarding, depending on the fringe benefits that are, that are available. So that a full-time employee depends different from the others, and we talked about that at the end, but, but otherwise, yes, I agree, it was five percent that we wanted, and I think we moved it.
That was the meaning that you had in minutes? Uh, no, we didn't, we did not, we made no motions in that meeting.
To defer that to him?
We deferred all decisions until tonight, final decisions. We put it in Mr. Laffer's hands to produce the balanced budget tonight.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor to approve the minutes of October 15th or 25th, 2013?
Aye.
Aye. And then we do not have the minutes for November 14th. Voucher review?
So we don't have minutes for, uh, that's correct. I'll have to get those to spring next time.
So the step I was asking of those then was in the minutes that we haven't got.
Right, right, to clear that up, yeah.
So the reason not having the minutes. So, we're looking at vouchers now. I had a couple items on the, our visa bill for October. Looks like we're going to Safeway and picking up things for, it says concessions, but it looks like it's, you know, small items, so.
What page are you on?
I'm looking at credit card, and then the, if you look at the credit cards, let's see.
Which page bottom right are you looking at, Kirk?
Well, this is the thing, these are printed off from home, so I can kind of get a head start, so it's going to take me a minute to find out where they are. If you look at Mr. Patterson first, Coach Patterson, let's look here, beyond, maybe. Okay, concessions, that's for Costco, that's.
Page 29, there's a Safeway.
22.
28 is Safeway.
22 is concession, concessions for Safeway. 23, I see concessions, again, for Safeway.
Isn't this one of the five, seven?
Well, there's, there's both. Pizza Factory on page 29, assuming that's for NWAAC party, and there's a cake above it at Safeway. And that's for Mr. Patterson. So, my question is, I thought we covered this a while back about purchasing, making purchases, because I don't see how we're getting these reimbursed. Normally, at least in the past, we used to have people pitch in and come up with the funds for parties or pizza parties, to my knowledge, or go to a pizza place and pay there. I don't recall us, and this is maybe part of the concern with credit cards, is that it's really easy to use them and expect to pay them back somehow, but.
How do you mean payback?
Well, how are we approved to use these credit cards for, which are basically taxpayer money?
Well, there's, there's no reimbursement coming back to the district for this, if that's what you mean.
Well, that's, I guess that's my question.
No, that's, I mean, these are district expenses, there's money in the swim team budget, this year there is, for events, parties, awards, this type of things. So, that's.
Is that how we're using it? So we're just using it as a budget item, essentially?
Right, when, when, for instance, this Pizza Factory, that, that credit card charge gets entered in QuickBooks as a, as a swim team expense.
So it's just expensed out as part of like a war, some morale?
Right, right.
Bank end type stuff.
You know, I know there's been discussion within the commission about whether that should or shouldn't happen, I don't recall any consensus, motion, vote about this year. There's certainly, we've already cut that stuff from next year's budget, with the assumption that if you want to have a party, that there could be booster blood that provides these things, so.
So.
My assumption is January 1, these things don't show up anymore.
Okay.
That's the way we're driving the budget now.
Right. So we're trying to get the boost, if there is ever a booster that's established by someone, we're at that point in time going to use those type of funds for anything to deal with.
As long as that's in their mission, is there an independent body?
Right.
And they write it in their mission to say, this is, these are the things that we support, these are the things that we, and there would be a formal process that the district has to go to the booster club and say, these are our expenses that we would like, or potential expenses upcoming that we would like for you to cover, and then the booster club would decide to do that, so, it'd be a much more formal process.
How were the pizza relays covered in the past?
I thought they used to, the pizza point relay, sort of, didn't we used to go, from what I recall?
I mean, I never donated any money towards that.
Yeah, they would go and they would meet at the place, and they would, everybody would pay like $5.
It was, it was done here. It was, the kids would meet here after practice, the kids that that month, you know, because it happened on Saturday morning practice, they added up their points for how they got it.
Well, I know that.
And at the end of the month, the coach would, whichever kids, you know, won that month, you know, they, they sit there and eat pizza. Who paid for that pizza?
Well, I'm not sure, I know like the breakfast, smoothie breakfast, and that type, it was all donated.
Well, I understand that, but you know, I know my child probably did, probably eight or 10 of those pizza point relays over the years, and I, I was never asked to contribute any.
Well, I think it was fundraised money that actually paid it, which we at one time had some kind of idea of what that was.
Well, clearly, we're going to have to come up with a new way of doing it in the future, so, this is this past year, and then the concession, that's what we buy for the front desk, and then we get money back for that, right? Okay?
That's not a big step, but I don't know about intermingling these things, I guess that's how we're going to deal with this.
Well, there's a, there's a line item entry in the, in QuickBooks that goes in, right into our budget, into our actuals, as you see every month, that it, there's a line item entered for every one of these charges, and it goes into whichever account it is, so when you see budget versus actual, this money's all in it.
No, yeah, I understand, but if I look at the concessions, is there one for NWAAC? Is there one for?
There wasn't an NWAAC concession item.
Yeah, it's, it's just not easy to see it.
Yeah.
Broke out, so, but going forward, I guess we're going to deal with it.
Look at that in the future, because much of that went beyond that line item to the budget. Any more have discussion? None except vouchers. Not, I need a motion to approve.
I don't think you can.
Not that, I'll need, I need.
My hearing's not ready, obviously. Well, I did have another question, you have a thing that says NWAAC and checks, North would be parking wreck, it's about a third of the way down in the voucher report, what is that, NWAAC and checks, what does that mean?
It's $1,260 circumstantial. There was a voucher to replenish the petty cash account, and when it says NWAAC and checks, I think what she meant, she probably could have been a little more clear in the memo line there, but that was a, mostly that was a meat entry, or if it says NWAAC, there was a meat entry fee, and then we had to buy some checks for, you know, a few bucks, whatever that was. But, but, those, see if I can explain this clearly, those items get expensed when they are written from the district petty cash account, so when, when that check gets written, that's when it goes into QuickBooks and is recorded as an expense, so what you see on that line item right there is just that reimbursement back into the account. So if you remember, you know, we write that check, then we send the receipt off to the, to the county, your voucher processor.
Yeah.
So I think what she did was she had, she had a voucher for two items together, so it's a meat entry, and then there's a charge for the box of checks.
And so we're monthly, we're keeping the petty cash account, the $10.
Every time we write a check, voucher goes in, gets replenished.
Yeah, great.
And I can't think of anything right now, since we opened that account first week of August, I can't think of anything right now that we spent out of there that's not a meat entry. We're pretty much continuing that whole process of just using that for meat entries.
Got state auditor here, 585, is that still ongoing from the fraud investigation?
Yes, yes, they, in their, their final charge, we just processed that today, actually, it's their final one for 125 bucks, or thereabouts, but they have another hourly fee from one of their investigators that just came through this part.
And there's two, two separate line items there for waypoints, one on top says monthly, and the one on the bottom says computer maintenance, is there, there's two of them, one's for the top one for waypoints, $501 there, and then the one down further is $444.58, is there, what's the difference there?
I was looking at the second one earlier today, and now I don't see it.
Oh, the second one is, and it's probably.
It's about 39?
It's about, right in the middle.
Okay, oh, there it is. My recollection on that is, you know, 440 bucks is right about where our normal monthly bill comes in, but I think when the $500 one came in, I had some questions about the hourly expenses, is that bill, if there's add-on hours, I had some questions about the hourly expenses, and probably took an extra week or two to get those answered before we processed that voucher. So it came in.
Came in in October.
Right at the beginning of October, and then when he sent us his regular October bill that we normally get, then that was the $444 one, so we ended up just processing two of their bills in the same month.
And this group health, group health, medical, that's going to be pretty much the standard range we can look, normal 40, 600, thereabouts.
This month and next month, and then, actually, this month, we pay the December premium, and then we're done with them. As I was mentioning, based on the size of our group, the size of our insured group versus the size of our entire employee base, they're going to drop us, they won't cover a four-employee insured group or a 60-employee part-time base, so, which is another discussion I can get into when we're talking about.
Okay. Okay.
That's all I got.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve October vouchers, six zero one two through six zero six six, for total sixty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and six cents. And payroll transfers from M and O account for total forty-four thousand five eighty-four oh nine seven.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, stop report, please.
I just had a couple of things I wanted to point out. You know, I'm assuming, since you've all had this for a week, I'm assuming you don't have questions, obviously, that don't cover. But, uh, something that's not in here, I just found out recently, actually Lori knows about this too, Island Thrift made a five thousand dollar donation to the Health of the Island Youth Initiative, which is a program of the county that includes, that funds sports activities for kids that need some financial help in our district, Fruitville School District, and Southwoodby Park. So there are representatives from each of those three agencies that when there's money in this fund, we meet together regularly, usually once a quarter, to go over the applications from kids in the area and, and process these applications and get these, uh, whatever programs it is that they're signing up for, to get paid for these kids' participation. So it's pretty exciting to see that. That, that fund has been tapped out for almost a year with nothing in it. So it's just awesome to see that from Island Thrift. And, um, I have a meeting scheduled next week with, uh, the representatives from the Health Department and the School District and Southwoodby to, uh, go over that again. So, pretty cool to see. And, um, the other thing I wanted to point out was, uh, Matt nominated Derek Lochner, and I would guarantee probably nobody in this room's probably ever met Derek, except maybe Coach Bill, if he's here late at night during now and then. Derek works, uh, usually gets here about eleven o'clock at night, which is four hours on the janitorial shift. He's been here for about a year and a half, only works three or four nights a week right now, but, uh, very devoted and reliable, comes and gets his job done. And Matt pointed out in his citation here that Derek has trained six new janitors in the time that he's been here. There tends to be a little turnover in that position, so, uh, really proud that Derek's with us, and, uh, happy to see him get a award, and he gets a twenty-dollar gift card along with that, so. That was the only thing that I wanted to, those are the only things I wanted to mention specifically, and you probably had a chance to read some of these write-ups about the budget, the current budget, and about the pool temperature, water quality, sort of that ongoing discussion Alan pointed out. I know you're not making a decision for a couple of months, but there's intermediary information in there, following up on what Tom had to say. And then there's some information here about the, um, heater goods, and actually, with the board's permission, I'll kind of explain it next, probably got some, probably got some questions about it. And I'm just going to lay this out there, because I, me a couple, I know I screwed this one up, but, um, let me just lay out exactly what my recollection of what happened. About October of last year, Barron was doing our regular maintenance on the pool HVAC systems, which, as you remember, at that time, they hadn't been serviced for almost a year and a half. And we asked Barron to come in, service them, so this was their first time looking at the system. They went in, checked all the duct work, checked how all the systems were working, the fans were working, filters were working, changed out all the filters, and in the process found both of our heat exchangers and those two furnaces, um, that were cracked. So, um, they shut it down, said, we're going to red-tag this system, and, um, you can't start it again unless you sign a waiver of liability. How much of that, how much of all the details of that I actually reported to the board, and how much I said, let's figure this out and get these things turned back on? That part, I don't remember. I do know that the commission knew that the heaters were shut down, patrons were cold. There was an, actually, an article in the paper that the pool may have to be shut down until these things can be fixed. And our lead time, because they were custom furnaces, was at least three weeks. So, in the course of all of this, um, I checked with some people that I thought were experts, including Commissioner Merrill, asking what the risk was in a situation like this, and how we might mitigate that if we were to turn these heaters back on. And what we ended up doing was installing a couple of carbon monoxide monitors. That was the big risk, was there would be carbon monoxide in the room. And, um, so we put these monitors in, I signed the waiver, and Barron went ahead and turned the heaters back on. Then again, the amount of information that the commission had about what the risks were, how we were mitigating that, and my signature on the, on this waiver of liability, that part I don't remember. We could probably check commission minutes, but at this point, it's done. So then, I got to work on procuring some new heaters and getting them installed. Barron's original estimate was twenty-three thousand dollars, twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars, which was, and I'm estimating here, thirteen to fourteen for the heaters, those custom heaters, and about ten for, um, the labor to put them in. And again, with a three-week lead time at a minimum. At that point, because the bid was so high, I contacted MRSC and said, in our situation, our type of district, public entity, what are we supposed to do here for a bid that that high? What's our purchasing process? And they wrote back with this, according to the RCW, long description of what we're supposed to do, post the, uh, RFP in the paper, make sure it's publicized, accept sealed bids, open them in front of the commission, let the commission decide on who gets the contract. None of these things were done out of, in the interest of expediting, getting these heaters purchased and installed. The issue at the time to me was those carbon monoxide monitors could go off at any time, and then we're back to square one, and we won't have done anything. So, um, yes, I went around procedure, I went around the law, and, um, the one thing that I thought was a saving grace, uh, this may have been my own mind, just figuring this out, but I thought it was a saving grace, was we ended up purchasing, ended up ordering the heaters in, uh, probably the first part of November, late October, first part of November last year, and they were delivered in December and paid for with twenty-twelve dollars. So there's a fourteen thousand dollar purchase that, in my mind, didn't come under this law, because the, the breakpoint there was twenty grand. So, um, my thinking was fifteen for the heaters, and then, and I know this was part of our budget discussion last fall, when we were approving the twenty-thirteen budget, fifteen for the heaters, nine or ten for labor. And again, the concern about the labor was whenever we decided we were going to put those in, we'd have to shut the air down, which means shutting the pool down, because you can't poison people with uncirculated chlorine in the air. So, the alternative was, when it's being worked on, potentially, we could open the doors and turn on some big fans just to circulate the air, but there again, we'd rather do that in warmer weather. So in December, we were sitting here, we had these heaters here in possession, and waiting to do the labor until the weather got warmer. Well, as it turned out, summer came, and we didn't do the labor until we had our shutdown period, because then we knew for sure we wouldn't be losing dead pool time. We wouldn't have to shut the, the pool down just to do the heaters. So, bottom line, the, um, the heaters were purchased in twenty-twelve, labor was done this year, and MRSC wrote me a week ago to say, um, no, you still screwed it up. And he was, uh, show, uh, John Carpeeta from, uh, MRSC was, um, pretty pointed in his remarks, that no, you should have done it the right way, in spite of anything you made a judgment on as far as risk to pool availability, and your judgment as far as risk of patron safety, um, you should have done it the right way, and you should have been much more communicated with your board commissioners. So, uh, in both of those, in both of those areas, certainly, I'm guilty. And, you know, I, I did it out of, out of attempting to be expeditious and attempting to make sure that our customers still got served, but, uh, still did wrong. So, um, there's, if you, if you didn't get my update about our pending biennial audit, since you're an update today, that it's not happening until the week of the second of December, they're supposed to start next Monday, they notified me today, they're a week behind. So, um, I've sent as much information as I can, as I've been able to put together to them in advance, and the email I got back from our auditor today said, uh, thanks for the heads up, and we'll talk about it when I get there.
Okay.
That's the update on that, and, uh, certainly, certainly could have done a better job at least of communicating with the board at the time.
Well, thanks for letting me know.
Okay.
So, Bill, I just got to challenge you on one thing. These heaters, when did they actually get installed?
They got installed during shutdown, uh, just two months ago.
During shutdown, they did?
September, yeah.
I, for some reason, heard they just recently were installed.
Well, we had that scheduled with Barron pretty much all along, the day the area was shut down.
Now I've got this twelve thousand dollar charge, is that for the installation?
Which one are you looking at?
Install heaters and ducts for, uh, your voucher here at Tantan? Is that the same thing, or am I mistaken? It's a pretty good bill. So you have the, uh...
I have sixty-two thirty-six.
Sixty-two twenty-three.
Yeah, is that, is that Barron?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it would be, right? And so maybe I have those wrong, that the, uh, the heaters might have been nine thousand or ten thousand, and the labor twelve, thirteen, I guess.
But that was done during shutdown?
Yes, well, it's okay. Yeah, and it shows you, you know, the fact that you're just now approving that expense. They installed them, and for some reason, it took them three weeks to send us the bill, and I still don't know why it happened. I mean, if somebody owed me twelve grand, I'd send them the invoice right away, but, but we didn't get the bill actually till October, so that's why we processed it.
And you don't, you don't have a copy of this liability thing you signed for this waiver?
Well, that's the funny thing. I mean, I mean, you guys all know that this was a public record request from a citizen. And, you know, the odd thing that, I, I can't figure out why I didn't keep a copy of the signed document. I have, I have the original that they emailed to me, so I provided that as part of the record request.
Barron's would have a copy of those.
Well, I asked them for it, and they said they don't, um, which is weird, but, um, you know, I mean, I've got the emails back from them saying, no, sorry, can't find it. And I called them, is it, where is it? And they said, no, can't find it. But, I mean, I can verify it for their sign. That's the document I signed, the one that, the one that I provided for.
I'm just, you know, it's, it's, it's concerning, because, I mean, we have had a lot of complaints about air quality, um, and, so I, I don't know. Was there anything posted to allow the public to know that there was a potential concern here about carbon monoxide issue?
We had a, what to do if the carbon monoxide alarm goes off posted by the lifeguard standing over here, so, um, you know, we didn't, didn't make a huge production out of that.
And you had training? Is there like people that signed some kind of training?
Not to that extent. Matt, Matt worked with the guards at the time and made sure the thing was going on.
Something was discussed, uh, you brought it to the board in October, November, twenty-twelve, I believe, looked at the minutes, so that we, we did know that the heater changers were cracked.
Oh, yeah, we talked about it, I think, and I remember...
That was brilliant, at that point, it was.
And I recall discussion being like there regarding when we would do it, because it would cost shutdown, and opening the door, and the weather would be cold.
Sadly, we don't, I don't know if you still have the audio for that, you can actually go back and see exactly what was said, but, uh...
And then we were having a lot of air quality concerns. We also got the state inspector in with a NEDA, who came out and made sure everything was good to go with the water quality, and also the air quality, and made some recommendations of what we could do. So, all those things are being addressed at that time as well?
Yeah, and it's too bad that, that maintenance hadn't been done as well, because when I asked, um, the Barron's service tech, how could it be that these five-year-old heater changers are, are cracked? You know, his comment was, lack of maintenance. You've got to change those filters two, three times a year, that hadn't been done for a year and a half. When you've got an inch of dirt piling up like your filters, then your duct work doesn't pass the air the way it's supposed to, and your heat exchangers get too hot and are cracked. So, um, you know, going back far before my time, that, that maintenance wasn't getting done.
I see a lot of HVAC maintenance on this, again, you have somebody providing documentation, um, that wants to see to the bottom of this, and HVAC maintenance, maybe this isn't the same thing, but it's a Barron's report, and they've done HVAC maintenance all the way back to two thousand and five. The last time they did it was, that I can see is July two thousand and twelve, and then it stops for a while, and then again in November two thousand and twelve, so. And it's a, it's a normal monthly charge of about five or six hundred dollars?
They have been doing the front side...
Is that just this side?
Two separate systems, yeah. From the window forward, they've been doing that for whatever number of years. You see, there, there's a company called Echo that, um, not only was doing the duct work and fans and heater maintenance, but they also provided the electronics, that Matt could control things from his computer just right in the corner, everything, the, the fan speed, how much outside air we get, temps.
That's, that's, we have this section.
Yeah, he can do that from here, but that system was provided by this company called Echo. And they were doing not only the maintenance on the electronics, but also on the hardware and the system itself. And at some point in twenty-eleven, they just decided they didn't want to contract anymore. And I called them, and I asked them why they hadn't been here for a year and a half, that's what they told me. Says in our records right here, we just decided it's too far to go, it's no profit margin in for us. They informed, whether it's Craig, or Tim, or Lloyd, whoever was the maintenance supervisor at the time, informed them, and just never came back, and nobody bothered to set anything up with a new NEDA.
That's the one thing about air quality in here, because that keeps getting brought up. See those, those sound panels there, they did not used to move like that. There's better circulation in here than there, there was two years ago, I know that for sure. Because that's sitting this viewing room for years, and watch out that pool, and you can see them actually moving down there. They didn't used to do that. So I don't know what's, what's changed, but there is better air circulation in here now than there was, you know, a year, two years, three years ago. You know, I mean, I, I don't know if you've noticed that or not, but...
I remember standing on the pool that, that day after Barron changed all those filters a little over a year ago.
Yeah, I'd say you can actually watch them actually moving right now. They didn't used to do that, so.
Time check. I, I don't know if Tom's going to be put on the spot, because HVACs and all of that stuff goes through my mind, but Tom was involved and knows the HVAC system really well, beyond your two or three-year horizon. And can you give a date of when did, when did the whole thing get rejected? It must have been four or five years ago, wasn't it?
I would say more than seven, eight years.
Seven, nine?
The biggest thing is, the pool was built in eighty-two, and it wasn't until, I was a commissioner, two thousand and three to two thousand and seven, we had the vacu, or the base vacuumed out, which looked at about fifteen five gallon cans of debris, not dust, but debris. That's my recommendation to build it, get it down, have it done again on a... to have it done again on a biannual basis, something like that, just to keep the vents open, keep the airflow open. The biggest concern I have is with the mold and spores that are going to be in there. In fact, if you take a look at the vents in the front, I think we have covers over them. So, the air won't circulate through there because there was water, debris down there at the vents.
Oh, right here.
In the front water area. And it's, it's something that is an onboard project and it's something that needs to be addressed. But again, we did change the whole, again, we had two separate HVAC systems now. And that was one of the ways we took care of the four problem was we had a, a new HVAC system. Put it in the roof in the locker room. And that was about three years ago.
That's what Barron's takes care of?
Yes. Because we did have an electric heater in the front end of the building. It was just too expensive. We switched it over to gas.
The Barron's just recently, we talked about this briefly at the last budget meeting a week ago, but they just recently gave me a new scope of work. So, they'll, they'll come to do their preventive maintenance four times a year and do both systems all four times. And it'll actually save us, I sent, I sent you an email about it. I think to say just 250 or 300 bucks a year off of what we have been paying. So, that actually increased the number of services that they do on the big system. And actually have them costing us a little bit less because they'll save mileage by not having to come an extra couple of times.
Yeah, they're, they're coming out of the, from where?
No. Well, they have a tech locally here, but, but...
And they're going to service both sides?
Right. We have been to the last year, but the, the service intervals have been offset. It's just going to consolidate.
Do you have a question on staff reports?
And I, you know, I hate to bring this up, Bill, but the, the roof bids, are those, that's something also, I don't, I don't recall seeing bids for roof bids.
Um, since they were under, uh, I'm forgetting, forgetting the, uh...
About 1,000?
The break point.
About 7,500 we have.
For our, well, I did get bids. I got bids on the roof.
How many you got?
Three.
Three?
Yep.
Someone for replacement. I didn't see they had someone. Two for repair.
Well, the, the one that we took was torched down over, the material is already torched down. So, it was the same roof just over the top of the one that was already there. And one of those bids was for, this guy wanted to do a tear down and a replacement. Obviously, I came out a little higher. But, I mean, the, the end product was going to be the same. So, I, and there again, I considered that to be the same, the same end result.
Wasn't it the same discussion where you were trying to get people to come out to give you bids and they weren't, just didn't want to come out? Like they were having a hard time getting?
For example, reputation.
Yeah, it's like we, they would make the appointment and not show up, but they just wouldn't come.
And that, that actually is the truth. I know, I know. I know someone who does government bids and he's in maintenance and it's actually for that housing authority there. And it's, it's hard to get people to come out sometimes for government bids. A lot of people don't want nothing to do with it. And, and roofers are the worst.
I remember when we were trying to get the bids.
Mm-hmm. I know somebody. It took them, uh, it took them seven months to get, to actually get bids. Nobody wanted to come out.
So, any more questions or comments, discussion on the staff reports? Is anyone else going to give a report besides yourself?
Um, the rest of the staff reports are Barron's. Coach Bill, did you have any comments you wanted to make about your report at all?
I'd like to comment on, if I could. Coach Bill, way to go on the swim meet.
Yeah, congratulations.
It was a lot of fun. Two hundred, about 200 kids, wasn't it? Something like, 211 kids? How many teams?
Seven.
Seventeen. It was a blast, man. Two days. And, uh, I got a lot of feedback from the judges, the officials. They were really impressed, really liked it. Had a good time. I got around and talked to, talked to kids from other teams and coaches. And they all sort of said, "Good job, man." And, uh, it was funny how it was, that was kind of cool. So, that's what it kind of throttled back a little bit. But hey, that's all. I haven't followed that. But anyway, good job, man. And the kids had a blast. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Sean will not be here. Got a message from him that he will not be here. So, it looks like we're going to have to put off the director's annual review until next month. So, that leaves the 2014 budget.
I assume your last proposal was the one that ended in minus 329288. It's buried under paper here. It's on page three. It's on page five. At 9:56 PM, it says stuff up in the corner. Is that the last one that we're looking at?
Just two, minus. 329288. Yep.
329288. So...
That's a minus.
I don't, I don't care what that is, as long as it's the right page.
It's the right page. So, that's the one with, uh, as I described it on the cover page there, that's the one that has all the bullet points. The other two were really just illustrations. And if I could summarize again for you, the things, the things that are new for 2014 but haven't been changed since the original assumptions that are still in this budget. Um, the aquatic director's still on salary in this budget. If that's something this commission decides they don't want, then go ahead and vote on that and tell them. Um, the high school team's still at $6,000 instead of the 3500 it had been at.
Did the high school swap? What time? What, how much?
$6,000.
Instead of 3500.
Right. Right. So, it's still at 6,000 in this budget like it was in the previous one.
That's okay.
And then, um, the assumption is still that there are four people on this, in the staff that are eligible for healthcare or health insurance. And I have a few things to report about that and maybe some options that we could look at. And the training budget, which, um, had been cut to, been cut in half basically to $4,500, training for lifeguards and instructors, that's still at that level as it was in the previous budgets I submitted. So, the things on the bullet points on this cover letter are all changes from our last meeting.
So, you changed the, it's a 10% reduction on everything?
There's a 10% increase on...
That's right, on the fees.
Right, on fees, which was already in there. There's a 10% increase on swim school and on rentals.
Okay, but there were two areas that you said just 18 months ago.
What was with those? Swim school and pool rentals.
Are they with the 10% increase or should...
They got the 10% increase. That was what I understood to be my direction.
Where, where, if you tell me where they are so we can see what it'll be like without the 10% increase.
Well, I, I noted the amounts on the, on your cover page there. The, uh, the INWAC dues had been at a 15% increase and those were revised downward to 10.
Yep.
And that was a $2,450 decrease in revenue. Now, as you can see in the second bullet point, raise pool rental fees by 10% and assume no change in attendance. So, that became, instead of $12,000, it became 13,200. So, it says in parentheses there, that's a $1,200 increase in revenue.
I've got to catch up with, you've, you've been playing with these numbers near home on them, but I've had so many copies going by now. I just want to be sure that we're exactly on the same page. So, whereabouts is the pool rentals?
Can you see all these budgets at the bottom right? I wrote number one, number two, or number three, right by the page number, at the bottom right of each, each one of those pages. You got to be looking at the one I gave you tonight.
Yes. I, I was pretty happy when I left the budget.
The one I gave you tonight with the bullet points on it.
What, what are the bullet points here?
Did I give you that tonight or did you print that?
I have absolutely no idea.
Do you need, do you need this page?
Let me, let me put that one up. They hold.
No, this one has bullet points right here. And there's a date of Wednesday, November 20th at the top.
Yeah, okay, November 20th. I'm with you there.
There's a packet there with a budget.
Yes, there is.
And then there's page numbers at the bottom right.
But they're both have, they're two sets of numbers on.
Yeah, so it has a handwritten number, which is the, which budget number that is, the three that I sent you.
Well, this one has one, two, and three. One, two, two, two. Oh, I see. So, that comes with...
So, it'll say number two, page two, is budget number two, the second page.
Okay, so we're doing budget number one?
We're doing budget number two.
Number two.
For one and three were illustrations.
Okay, let me get rid of those.
So, number two is the one that kind of you've come up with.
That reflects everything we talked about last week.
Okay. There's so much paper going around here that I just thought you'd serve on the right one.
Right.
So, number two, page two.
Number two, page two, there. Okay.
Near the top of the page, it says pool group rentals, $13,200.
Okay, now that's your bullet point here, which is adjusted.
That number used to be 12,000.
Okay.
That is directed to raise that by 10%.
Yeah, go on. I just stopped reading the room so I can see what we're doing.
The swim school, I am, I don't think we directed that to be raised by 10%.
Everything.
I think what we said was to, let's do a comparison, I think was the, just to do a comparison.
I plugged it in. I plugged it in. And then it says right here how much it was. So, you, you'll see just from that amount, you'll see what the change would be if you took that out. So, what you see for swim school, that's $1,200. So, if we took that out then, that would take it down to, um, 12,000.
That's correct. Okay, so, because this one here was sort of, we'll do it for all. And then this one here was something we weren't going to necessarily raise. And so, it's 12,000 that we're looking at as the option. Okay, that's correct. Good.
So, what you'd be left with if you took the $1,200 out, getting close to the same price. And then swim, swim lessons, uh, if you look sort of toward the middle of page one, budget number two, so right above where you were just looking, swim lessons right in the middle of that page. We had already raised the private lessons to $100 from '85. So, where it says youth lessons, 113,300.
Yes.
That number used to be 103,000. Try to raise that 10%.
Okay, now, we were, I thought we weren't, we were going to look at it without raising that one 10%.
Well, we were, I think what we directed him to do was, was to, to basically put them side by side.
Exactly. So, he's trying to write it in. So, they're 103 then?
103.
And 300?
Well, one, 10,300 is the, the...
Oh, so 103.
So, it'd be $103,000 either.
Okay.
Right? So, that's if we kept it without raising the rate on the year.
That's correct. Yep.
So, I do have that budget we did review from our last special meeting.
That's another budget I did. I just want to...
No, I'm just saying that I don't know how much we can depend on raising revenues. I think we were focused on reducing expenditures. And, uh, I know. So, let's go.
Okay. There was $8,400 that was directed to restore to the travel expense line. And that was for primarily for swim coach travel expense.
Yes.
We had, just prior to that budget, on, what is this now, the sixth pass? So, that was the fifth pass. So, between the fourth and the fifth, that was one of the changes to take that out with the assumption there'd be a booster club. And it was decided by consensus last week that there was not any guarantee of a booster club at this point. So, we're going to add that back in. Um, next item is $7,000 I plugged on the undergovernmental line. Um, that's for the expense of the biennial audit. We're assuming it'll be about $7,000. And then the next bullet item there, $1,200 I forgot to put in the budget unfortunately for Team Unified, the, the swim team management program. Who knows that?
Pardon? I'm trying to find out where they sent that.
That's under expenses. So, it'll be, yeah, it's two pages. That'll be budget number two, page three. About three quarters of the way down the page, it says swim team, $1,200.
Oh, I see. And that's Team Unified.
Yeah, that's Team Unified. Now, theoretically, you could put that under office expenses. You could put it under wherever it goes. It has to be in there somewhere. Um, and then your direction that you gave me on payroll. I have to take my heels in here a little bit, commissioners respectfully. Um, it was tough for me to find these things and especially without a clear mission and especially without knowing what you all feel the priorities should be. I did take $9,000 out of the youth instructor expense, which was about a 15% decrease in that area. And by doing that, we're assuming that the average size of a class will be four kids to one instructor. It has been more like three to three and a half. And the problem with going to four, well, there's two problems going to four. One is that we have never shut anybody out of a class if they're the only one to sign up for that time period, at least since I've been here. And, you know, we've called them and tried to say, "Hey, you know, you signed up for 5:30. You're the only person that signed up for that class. And can you move to 6:30?" We make those phone calls. Some people just can't do that. And in my experience here, we've let that class run. It hurts to see one instructor that would pay $16 an hour out there working with just one kid. But that way, every patron that comes here is satisfied that they signed up for something and they actually got the class that they signed up for and they didn't get shut out of it. I can't see us making that happen with this assumption coming true here to take $9,000 out of that budget. Um, the other thing that we'll have to be real careful about is with these Level One tadpole kids. WSI says six kids per instructor, but at that level and even sometimes at Level Two, it becomes a little dangerous having six kids with one instructor. Um, even the best instructors that we have aren't comfortable at that level with six kids. They like to have at least an aide working with them who can at least mind the kids on the wall and kind of be careful of what they're doing, make sure they don't fell in. While the main instructor, the train instructor has a couple of them around the water with hammer earth. So, um, those two aspects of how we allocate swimmer, swim instructors to classes become really problematic if we mess around with that swimmer to, to the instructor ratio in this way. But if we did, we could take about $9,000 out of the budget. Um, then the other place I grabbed a few thousand dollars, that last bullet point on the cover sheet there, I took $3,640 out of the janitorial staff and I just changed the assumptions from the standard four-hour shift that we have on janitor shifts right now down to three and a half. Um, what this would mean is things that janitors don't get done, we would end up having to assign the lifeguards during the day. And, you know, on the surface, that's doable. But right now, it's already a little bit problematic for some of the lifeguards that we have been scrubbing the pool decks when there's two of them here and not very many people in the pool. Um, not because it's such hard work or they don't feel like doing it. It's just that these guys are paid to be lifeguards and they want to be attentive to what's going on in the pool and when they're running around with a bucket in a, in a broom. Um, it's a little tough for them to do that. So, um, this would add things to their, their plate like, um, vacuuming some of these areas that it's not practical to wet down and scrub, washing the windows, doing a little bit more just as far as keeping the pool area clean. Um, I guess the other thing is, just as practical nature, I mentioned with Derek, it's kind of tough to prevent turnover on that janitor shift. And if you start cutting hours, now that's a, if you're normally used to working a four-hour shift, and even though you're only getting minimum wage, you know, that four-hour shift may be what actually, you know, brings in that last bit of food that you need, you know, to get by. And that's a 12 and a half percent decrease in the number of hours we're allowing these guys to work at night. So, um, just a fact. And if those things are acceptable to you, then I'd like you to tell me so. You know, if we can, if we can understand those concerns and if you want me to cut... You know, if we can, if we can understand those concerns, and if you want me to cut more dollars than that out of the payroll budget, I'd like to have some direction on what your priorities are. Before we just say it's a, on you, it's a, it's a general whack.
Can I say a few things?
Sure.
Number one, I got a crank from you on an email about what the mission of this place was, saying adding taxpayers to the role of people when we're reducing our costs, or trying to provide a good range of programs at the least cost possible. Now taxpayers are people that use the facility, and taxpayers are people that pay the levy. The levy campaign is based on the commission's and the director's assessment of how little we can really raise from the public through a tax levy, and we reduced it a little bit a couple of years ago because we felt we could probably balance our books that way. That's the general taxpayer levy, and how we try and be accountable to the public. Then we have the taxpayers that use the pool. And we try and keep our programs as inexpensive as possible, so we keep the fees down, so as many people as possible can use the pool. That's how all that works together. So your crank may have been for some reason liking taxpayers, but they're all there, they're there, and there's nothing wrong with that statement, and no difference from what I said before. Now, if we take a look at those two parts of the equation, the levy on one side, we have it fixed, we used to try and keep that at fifty percent of expenditures. Okay, roughly. And then we have on the other side, the revenue from our programs, because that's the money that the users are paying, because they're more interested in the pool than the others. Now, when we're dealing with it that way, the only thing that's superficial, or above and not fitting either in a productive sense, is overhead. So when we took a look at salaries and wages the other day, I was very happy with the five percent cut. As director, you said, yep, that's my job, I'll come back with it. But I want to see the five percent cut. And personally, I like Erica, she does a wonderful job, but we can't afford another full-time position if this is the budget reality. Maybe next year, if we can figure some way of putting the shift together, but not right now. Because the cost is not just salary, which you said is, it's going to be the same amount either way. The cost is also payroll, taxes, and all of those things on the next page. And when you take a look at it, what we have for 2014 is, you've taken out twenty-two thousand, I think it is, or twelve thousand dollars. But the old numbers, in one of the earlier budgets, was five hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight seventy-six. And when you add together those costs, the fringe benefits costs, it comes to six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, five hundred and ten. Now, just in 2010, that number was five hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So you're running, what do you want, seventy-five, seventy-eight thousand dollars more in four years on salaries. And then you're saying, but we can't stretch it now because we have to cut back. You've got seventy-eight thousand dollars more than we had four years ago going into that bucket. There must be a way that can be cut back. You know, so that's, if you're asking for one commissioner's view, that's this commissioner's view, and that five percent is something that's mandatory, you've got to find it. You know, because it doesn't fit in the cost of programs, delivery programs, and it doesn't fit in the levy.
What I'm doing is, I'm, I'm reducing the cost of delivering this, this swim school program, and my concern is it's going to reduce the amount of service that we're.
How about the number of janitors? You said there's six janitors?
Oh, there's two on a shift.
How many shifts?
I said Derek has trained six of them because there's a lot of turnover in that job.
I thought there was one janitor that did the whole job.
No, two janitors at a time, doing four hours of work.
How many four hours at a time? Like, how many janitors?
Eight labor hours per night, seven days a week, seven nights a week.
These guys work for, they work for you?
Right?
Who do they work for?
They work for us.
Okay, okay, okay.
Does that mean some of the grants keepers are contracted out, so?
Just the, the long, long way.
Just contracted, yeah.
I just had a comment on the, what you were saying about having the class ratio with instructors. If we did that option, I mean, it does sound like it would be, in some cases, not safe, and that wouldn't be acceptable, but in some cases, if you have on the website times they shift due to class size, we do that in the county when we do O M inspection classes. That way, when you, you can make that call, if there's only one. I don't, no, you can't really count on that as far as budgeting, but I wouldn't think that it would be safe to do it with smaller kids, but we're, we're feasible combining classes.
We, we can do that, you know, this, that's, that is doable. I'm just saying that on the side of, of telling people that, guess you're going to have to wait till next session. That's not acceptable, obviously, to have one patron that gets told that.
No.
And we will have to put an aide or somebody in one of those larger classes. But we're, if that's a directive that I'm getting, then that's, that's what we'll end up doing. And again, it's doable to ask lifeguards to do a little more cleaning. I'm less concerned about, frankly, I'm less concerned about the safety issues there, because we only have them do that when, you know, when it's a time that they can actually still see what's going on in the pool, and it's not very busy, and there's another lifeguard on deck all those times. So it's not so much the safety, as much as this, frankly, I don't think it'll get done as well as it will by that extra half hour of work by the janitors. Just because that's what the janitors do, that's their job, and lifeguards are lifeguards, and, you know, they don't, they're not going to clean the windows quite as well, I don't think, and they're probably not going to do any job quite as well as a janitor does, just because that's what they. So.
So when we asked you last week to do the five percent cut, and then I was one of the ones that had said, look, you know, you're the one who's the director, you know, you're intimate with the duties of the pool, and you know what needs to be done, and now I see you come back with this, and you're highlighting that if we did the janitorial staff cut, then we'll be cutting, to me, I remember when I, when I first became commissioner, one of the complaints was there was gum on the floor, it was dirty all around, I had people at work telling me that, you know, this place was dirty, and it's gotten better. I wouldn't want that to happen again, and that being slacking off, if you're telling me that's just going to happen, and that's not favorable, and then you're telling me that there's a safety issue with this other bullet. So I'm wondering why, I want you to tell me why it is that it makes more sense in your mind to offer those as bullets as opposed to cutting back the, the full-time position, the salary position. Is it Erica?
Yeah, Erica's.
So what benefit is it to cutting these of them?
I'm not sure what alternative Helen's getting at with the aquatic director. She's, she's essentially said that none of the benefits that we offer are of any interest to her, because she, you know, she has to invest in the, in the retirement plan. She has maybe health insurance, she's not going to take either one of those. There'd be a little bit of vacation pay included to her, and that's about it. The pay that we've been giving her on salary is virtually the same as she would be getting at her current hourly wage with a little bit of overtime that she would just by necessity have to pop into now and then within fifty-two weeks. So there's really no change, and, and, so I'm not sure where the, where the idea of it being such a bigger hit to payroll tax and benefits because she's on salary, I don't, I don't understand that.
I guess I didn't say my question clear enough, like, what I'm saying is, what, if we cut her hours to thirty-five hours a week, what would be the bullet point here of what the risk would be to the district and patrons? Okay, bullet over here says, "Some angry patrons about not having their class in a school." And here, it's possible people being angry about there being trash on the floor, or the, the lifeguards potentially cleaning the deck to have saving someone's life. What would be the bullet point that would be missing out if she was thirty-five hours? What is it that she, what's her job duty that would be lacking if she didn't get full-time pay?
Well, we kind of have to pick and choose. She works almost forty hours every week. If you remember discussing this last week, I mean, just to add a little of my opinion and experience into it, I don't know anywhere that you could go where you find somebody that is responsible for scheduling, training, discipline, supervising thirty-five, forty people that's not on salary. Suppose they're out there, I've, I've never seen it. So to me, one of the benefits, and I'm not answering your question, but one of the benefits of having her own salary is that we put that position in a place where, where the district is actually investing in, in the job that she does, as if it was a professional position, which it is. So if Erica, Erica the person ever decides she wants to leave, then another person is attracted by the fact that this district respects that job duty as an essential part of what we do here. We keep people safe when they're swimming, and we instruct kids to learn how to swim. Those are her two duties, and she manages both of those departments, and she personally does a great job at it. And it takes her forty hours a week to do it. I, I watch what she does, and I look at a time card every week, and you know, sometimes she clocks in thirty-seven, thirty-eight, sometimes it's right at forty, but it takes a person forty hours to get that work done.
Yep, but her point is not how good a job she does. Nobody's dumping on Erica for a job, but she isn't, she isn't doing the life saving. She isn't doing the teaching, you make it sound that way. She's managing. And if there's an area we can cut back in without hurting the programs or faulting the programs, it's the management side. You could take over some of the responsibility that Erica does, in, you know, in the position that you have potentially. But we're building up a management cadre here, which would be very nice to have, but it's too expensive for our budget.
Doesn't affect the budget, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it does affect the budget, because you, if you look at the 2010 payroll taxes, it's fifty-seven thousand dollars. If you look at it for the projected budget, it's seventy-four thousand dollars.
Well, it's not just Erica's job that did that, maybe there's other things that came into play for that. That wasn't just Erica's job that did that.
Oh, no, it's all of them, it's all of them.
So it's something on one position here.
Do you remember my explanation last week, but last week? When I came here a year and a half ago, the duties that are under aquatic director right now were split between two part-time people who rarely ever saw each other or talked to each other because they were both part-time jobs. They were scheduling the same people to do two different jobs in two different departments, didn't talk to each other. Kids were getting scheduled to work fifty-five hours a week and not getting paid overtime. It was a horrific mess.
That's right.
And if there's one thing that I feel like we're doing a lot better right now, it's managing those two groups of people who have so much overlap. You don't see overtime in that group anymore. You don't see those cops.
I have no problems with improvements with more people running an operation. I have huge problems with not being able to balance a budget, without doing things that raise the taxes on people that are hurting and upon me, which although some people are, well, many people aren't. And that's essentially what we're talking about. It's a different issue altogether.
So the suggestion here is to take Erica, to take the aquatic director position and cut it to thirty-five hours a week, is that what I'm hearing? Well, I think that would have a horrific impact on the service that we're able to provide and the safety level that we're able to provide.
Okay, when, when you said that, on the last paragraph of your email, page two, you said that the budget comes out to a surplus of sixteen hundred dollars that budget number three, does budget number three include the ten percent increase to swim lessons and to rental?
No.
Okay, let's go with that.
Budget number three, you had, and here's, here's. Here's something to consider on the revenue side, that we haven't talked about in any of these budget meetings, this may be a time for it. You've all seen some pictures that I emailed out a couple of weeks ago, you probably saw Samuel Simon sitting in the office here for a little while. We're discussing, and I have no direction obviously with the commission on how it's going to work yet, but we're discussing advertising, the pool advertising.
Right.
And a three-by-four plastic panel that would hang on one of these sound panels for a year would have a fee associated with it. And business could put their logo on it, phone number, whatever they wanted, but this pool gets eighty thousand plus. People walking in here to pay to use the facility every year, plus everybody that comes in to watch those people use the facility. People that sit in here in the viewing room and watch swim school and practice, people that come to meets, people that just come hang out, even kids that come in to use the bathroom, you know, they're coming through that door and they will see whatever is hanging here to be advertised. So I'm not sure where else in town you get that kind of exposure to whatever is that, that you're advertising. And I think the only feedback I had on that point that I sent out at the time was from Lori, where you had pointed out, you know, it's probably use discretion or have a policy about healthy lifestyle choices that we want to advertise here, obviously, you know. No booze, no bars, no smokes, that kind of stuff, you know, then fast food, of course, that quarter line is whether, you know, you want to do it or not.
That's where the money comes from now.
Yeah, right.
Why they're not.
Yeah. But the, the point is, just from Curtis talking to a couple of businesses around town, and, and, I mean, I'm using my own personal opinion here on this, granted, but if, if you owned a business in this town, or somebody told me about this type of exposure, and said, what would you pay for a three-by-four sign that's in those people's faces every time they come in? I'd pull five hundred dollars out of my wallet so quick and hand it over, and, I mean, to me, that's, that's an easy call for a business person to make, depending on what type of exposure they want. And if we could sell twenty of those, there's ten thousand bucks we've made out before. So that's an idea that I believe ten thousand dollars is pretty easily doable, twenty, which is what I used to come up with, budget number three. Probably not so much, that'd be a little bit more work, but you know, if we're talking about a full year to get that money in the door, maybe so. So if that's selling, to get twenty, I think what I came up with is you're selling four of those panels a month at five hundred bucks. Curtis has actually gone to the effort of mapping out where each one of these panels is in the building, and drafting up sort of an initial proposal to a business. But of course, we need commission direction on whether we're going to.
Well, if you're going to, right, and if that's something we should discuss then, because people will be spending their money for 2014, in the beginning of 2014, their budget for advertising. So if it's something you're going to do, you have to approach the dealer later, and get on their radar. So I'm not sure if I like that as an idea to balance the budget, or as an idea to enhance the pool, but either way, I think it's a good idea.
Well, there's, part of it is, I guess my concern about just throwing ten thousand dollars on that revenue line, and then voting on that budget just as is, without some detailed direction on what that means, it's a little concerning.
Sure.
So I think maybe that's what you mean by just using it to balance the budget.
Right, that's what I'm standing at with that, because we're relying on something that we, we have no clue about, although we could start, I mean, giving you direction as far as what to do with that, and then if we make revenue on it next year, then that would be great, because then we have it for the following year, or to enhance the pool at a slide, I don't know, it'd be a little bit more enjoyable. Any more questions or comments?
I'd like to ask a question, and I'd like to ask it, Coach Kelsey, I've heard a lot of rumors, maybe, maybe moving, possibly. But anyway, so we've already defunded one of the bronze coach positions, right? And I understand the numbers are down, and everybody knows that, but then again, the younger groups kind of numbers seem to be building back up. Very optimistic about that, right? Is there any possible way with the budget that you could get by with three adult coaches until those numbers do come up? By combining practice groups, being very creative, maybe even using Curtis in the winter for dry land, if he swam a lot, do the red flag, or the fitness club in winter?
My point right now is to keep that going.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just wondering, would there be any creative way to do that, to, you could, you know, until the numbers come back up, and then you can kind of go back to the model we had before, to where you add another coach, and who knows, maybe you add another coach too. I'm just, I'm just asking, I don't even know if it's feasible, Coach, but just a thought, I think that that's probably five thousand dollars roughly, isn't it?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
How many hours is it a week? Six, six hours probably. Oh, initial assumptions here somewhere way back weeks ago. I mean, I'm not trying to paralyze you or anything, but if it's not doable, you know, that's, just, just a thought, so. He's looking at it, it was really exciting, a couple of weeks ago, there on Saturday morning, and I had to try to take breakfast though. It's like you're live, wasn't it, Mike? It was pretty cool. No reason to bring that up, there's no way that I could support raising the swim, swim uh, school lessons again since 18 months ago was raised 20%. To raise it another 10%, all you're going to do at that point is really, I mean, you're going to hurt young families. I mean, let's face it, young families are the ones who have young kids who are in swim school and they just don't have the money a lot of times. Another 10% is just going to, just really hurt them.
I agree with you, but you know, even at the masters level, there are two people that are no longer sending masters because they couldn't afford the extra fee and they could swim in off times, you know, so that they're, you know, when I asked, I said, how come you're there, why don't you come to the, to the masters? You know, the answer was.
For the 10%, you're saying 10% stops them?
I think the present 50 bucks stops, you know, and 55 or something, you're going to keep on probably having the same number and those people just think, but it's the same as the kids, I mean, I agree with you 100%. You know, when I look at it, I, last time, we talked about this in the workshop, we traded off, okay, 10% up except for the swim school and one other thing that had just had to raise it up. In return for a 5% cut on wages and salaries. I have not seen the 5% cut on wages and salaries, I will not vote for a budget until I see it.
I'd like to hear some direction on what the priorities of this district are so that I can make those decisions.
Okay, the low priorities is administration.
For?
The high priority is direct contact with case and programs.
I would argue that some administration is needed for, a lot of, I would argue that you would need some administration in order to administer those programs, so it's kind of like, it's a balance.
Yes, it is.
Which was what I had indicated, that I feel like that's your expertise as the director is knowing what, where we might shift that money from. If you're saying that you can't do better than 2.5%, then we're going to have to go hard, look at this. And, and decided the board, he's correct, he doesn't have any direction as far as us having our mission to guide that in those decisions.
I think we, we came up last time, we needed to come up with about $26,000 to get a balance. And that's using the 994,190 dollar revenues, which doesn't include increasing swim stool or pool.
Pool rentals.
Right, so that was the number we were looking at.
Because this, we had had.
With a million dollars in revenue that you write down before we.
I, I don't think we should include your panel thing, I think it's a great idea, hopefully it'll work, but we've got to go with what we hopefully know.
Yeah, and that's, that was my concern, was that I didn't want to plug something in there that would.
Exactly, and that's fine, so I know we looked at this, we discussed it a lot, um, we had to add the 90, 8400 dollars into travel, we had to add about $7,000 into, uh, into the audit, and that's what came, got us to this 25, 26,000 dollars we needed. That's where we said if you just reduce total salaries and wages by this 5%, that's going to get us that number, it's also going to reduce probably some of your corresponding payroll taxes in the back because most of that's based off.
Payroll taxes is 14% of total payroll, so.
So you could probably see that deduction, so that 14% there of, may or may not directly affect it, I, I don't know. So my, may not force you to reduce your salaries and wages by 26,000 totally, if you can offset a little bit of that savings in payroll taxes, but I don't know exactly what that number is. I, I just think personally, I know it's the salary folks that are driving the costs and I think you just need to hit a 10% on you guys', on your salaries, take them down 10% and if you're going to, that, that's going to be what I'm going to say. It's going to be the head coach because that's an area where we're losing money, it's going to be the director because you run the thing, and it's going to be the pool operator because I really think he should be an hourly guy, personally, because I don't know what he, he's off on weekends, he's still on his salary, but we got to have, we got to hire somebody to fill in for him on weekends. He should be on call unless he's on vacations.
He pretty much is on call. I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to expect a guy to work seven days a week.
No, he's getting his salary so he can show up when there's something wrong or, I mean, if he was hourly, he would punch a clock and be here and be looking around and fix stuff. That's just my two cents.
I guess you mentioned about that travel again, was that just for, for Coach Bill?
Yeah.
Or was that for Coach Bill only?
There's $1,200 in there on the last budget, fifth pass last time, there was $1,200 in there, we had cut out all the swim team travel expenses.
Yeah, yeah.
There's $1,200 left, it's for general district travel, you know, Malory needs to go to a pool operator seminar, so I can align those lines. So the 8,400 dollars that was added back was, the assumption was that was all for coach travel.
Coach Bill?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, because we had decided at the meeting before that the other coaches weren't going.
That's what I thought, I was just trying to follow the thing.
So I'm not hearing you correcting it because you're not having a 10% anymore, you now want 10%?
No, 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 I'm just saying the salary people, and that'll get us there, I don't want to cut any of these hourly people, I think especially the youth instructors, that's where we're making our money.
Our salary, people are under contract.
Well, we're going to have to renegotiate contracts.
The, um, the pool actually has pretty good representation across all age groups. And I think that we're taking a look, yes, surprisingly, but they're taking a look at the numbers in October, November, 13. And in fact, we get oriented towards the kids because the swim school is something we see is providing really important social function. But Tom, that's a really good idea, and I, I have a question for you, was we're taking a look at this, has anyone taken the thought of renegotiating or increasing direct contract with the military? Because if there are more people coming in there, there's a potential revenue source and we're raising our other fees 10%, so we should go back to them to see if we can get that up at least 10%.
That was in my original list of assumptions.
Well, I need to. You've got to tell me because.
We need to renegotiate with them if we're raising the fees 10%.
Well, can we put, can we recognize that somehow in here, what your target is to that, because that at least would take some money.
Their contract is valid through September right now, so our, the target would be through September of next year, so the target would be if we're raising fees 10%, then we go from $2.63 next September to.
If you, to quote your argument back at you, like you tried to do to me, we haven't raised that for ages, maybe we should go for bigger than 10%. Just, I'm just saying that if we can get some more revenue, we won't have to cut this.
What's that?
More squatters we're getting, we're getting.
We are getting.
The concept is that it would be equal to what, if we raise the price of a punch guard, then that translates to what that is, one tenth of that is a single, that becomes what we go and, and charge the military. I'm trying to find money for the punches.
I understand.
But that would be an assumption the same as the, um.
I think you're right.
I mean, we, we should look at that in the upcoming year and I'm almost thinking we may even make a motion to go ahead and start that in the process because we keep putting it off, putting it off, and although there's other things getting away, but that's the revenue source that you, so that you don't have the same discussion next year.
Okay, so we still need the 5% then?
We do, we need to.
Even 10%. Now, the aerobics instructor, that's another program that I, I look at, it's a great support for folks, and we can either add a fee to folks going to it or we can decrease the salary for the person that's running. And I don't know, you know, if you increase fees for stuff like that, whether people, people are still going to come to it.
Person that's been here the longest and sort of coordinates that area makes 17 bucks an hour. And I believe, I'm, I'm spacing on what the rest of them make right now, but I'm, I'm guessing they're in the 12 to 15 dollar range. And you know, when, when a person comes here for an hour and works and goes home, I'm not thinking you're getting anybody to come in here and teach those classes if we cut their pay.
We can think of really important things for everybody, we can argue that all the time and really know it's true. Tough luck as administrator, you're going to have to find out how to get 5% out of that budget. You know, I mean, we have to have a balanced budget, it's not anybody cranky around the table. You know, that's a really tough job and you're arguing about how nice people are when you bring up any one category, doesn't solve the problem. The problem is how can we crack this thing so that in fact you can keep the place running in a way that you would like, the programs are good for the public. And, you know, we went for a 10% increase, which I really didn't want at all as a trade off for getting that cut. You know, so, I mean, yeah, commiseration, it's, it's the time.
So the direction is not anything specific about a particular program that takes priority over something else.
My biggest worry is Erica's position not to do with Erica or her importance and all of the things she does and her commitment, but the fact is, I don't know if we want to make a long-term commitment with a messy budget like this. If we can get it down to a point that we have some flexibility and can look ahead, then yes, by all means, that's an important position. But if we can't do it, then how can we get along, just like our house budget? How do you do it?
I like the idea, I mean, I'm hopeful that these revenues pan out the way we have them and then we'll have additional revenues, but you said last budget meeting, we've already taken 25,000 out of the reserve for this year? Where are we going to end up at the end of 2013? I haven't seen those numbers. Are we going to need to tap into the reserve more?
I don't believe so. We're, the, the budget as I had it laid out for the last two months of this year, I, there's nothing significant that's going to throw us off of that. So no, I don't believe we're going to be.
It would be nice to get that reserve going again, have that.
Right, right, yeah, none of this discussion even talks about the fact that there should be $25,000 or more every year that goes into that fund.
I completely agree.
And that should be $18 that goes to set aside.
Well, you know, let's.
I mean, it should be, in a perfect world.
Again, as I mentioned before, calling the elephant in the room, the program that drains the most cash out of this district, comes in the highest negative number as far as program cost is our competitive swim program. And that's a fact.
When you say things like that and say we're not against the swim team, that's fine, I'll put that over there somewhere, but we can save the public over half a million dollars just by closing the hole. No programs, no lighting money needed, you know, and it's the same mentality just at large. And we're looking at this part of the equation, is how can we buy and provide the best programs for the community? The swim teams at all levels are very important programs, so the cost of the swim team is a necessary cost for us if we're going to have those programs. The pool is a necessary cost for the community if we want to have aquatics anything, okay? But yeah, we can, we can do a really good job on the budget, we can give them back, what, $700,000, $800,000 in the living? Just close the place and fire everybody. You know what I mean? That way, it doesn't work on this.
I think you're missing my point, Alan.
I'm afraid I hear.
I think you're missing my point and, you know, if you're going to bring it up, let me go ahead and bring it up back to you. That document is the document that you authored as chair of this commission and as you signed and it says lowest cost to the taxpayer.
That's right, which includes the people, I tried to explain that.
I, I understand what you're saying, but this program, let's acknowledge, this program is extensive to the taxpayers, and let's also acknowledge that everybody I have ever talked to about this program and explained how it works, in which I've gotten in their faces and advocated about this being a necessary program to this district, this swim team. It's necessary, there's no place else in town where a kid can join a program at age six and still be there at age 18. And, and there's, it is necessary to this district and it's worth the investment. And I have advocated to people for 18 months and not a single person that I've ever talked to from this community about that program who isn't directly involved in that program, not a one of them has said, God, you're right, I'm glad my money's going to work that. They've all said, what is this? Are you serious? This program should be a private program and they should pay for their lane space at the pool. That's what I hear from the community. And if anybody else in this room says they don't hear that from the community, they're not listening.
They are listening, but they're listening to a different community. I think the test is what is the relative cost of the swim team program? And I think you'll find our program does a very good job in the sense of cost to community when compared to other swim programs. And so we run a leadership on the swim team and on the swim programs, okay? I have no problems with that, but that's our job, to do as good a job as possible at as low a price as possible for members of the community that want to participate. And the levy campaign is where we defend the cost of the swim team and so on, and they agree, over 60% with the swim team numbers out there explicitly in the public to support.
I disagree with that.
Well, I don't care.
Can I ask a question, seriously? What is the plan tonight?
So in the interest of time. A decision's not going to get to a perfect budget.
May I ask you a question? I've got a wife, the header, and we replaced today, I'm going to go see my bride. If I could please be excused, and I hope the public understands that, she was in recovery when I came here and she's in her room now and I want to see her, sir. I'd bless you all.
Thank you, it's a pleasure. So I'm in recovery.
If you don't mind.
No, oh, yes.
A good circle with.
So as I was about to say, in the interest of time, it doesn't require an approved budget tonight, what I'm hearing is that we need a 5% decrease and what I'm concerned about is Bill is saying that we're not giving him guidance on where to cut. If we don't give him direct guidance or any further guidance, then he's going to take the comments he's heard tonight, come back next month, or if we want to have a special meeting, we can schedule a special meeting to see what would be this number eight, number nine, fifth cut, twentieth cut, seventh? Seventh cut of the budget. And we have to have it approved, can you be here?
By the end of this month.
December 2nd.
Monday, December 2nd.
Okay.
Supposed to be the 30th, but that's a Saturday, so.
Oh, I'll be then.
We can turn it in on the 2nd.
So then, I'm going to get the calendar.
And next Thursday's Thanksgiving, so.
We can all celebrate with turkey.
Today, the 26th is Dave certified and Lori goes away.
Is that right?
Just asking functionally.
I believe that is correct. 26th is certification.
Okay.
Do you want to shoot for Monday, 25th, or do you just want to pass it along? And I think I can make some time on Monday. We can get it done.
All right, sounds good. Monday it is, November 25th. For some reason, I have that date on my calendar that we're having.
So you want to shoot for 7 or?
6.
6, okay. Special meeting, Monday.
That is clear.
6.
6 o'clock, I have to check with Sean to make sure that works, but to the Novlee, that's November 25th, Monday at 6:00 PM.
And who's in that chair? Is that, just from my question. No, I'm, I'm in Lori's chair.
Oh, me, I'm here.
I'm still on the 25th.
25th.
It's not till the 26th, it's, okay, I'm sorry.
And we don't swear in until the first meeting after.
Okay, it's a meeting.
Not normally, yeah, so it's normal, okay, normal meeting, so it should be the 19th of December.
Okay. And do you need further clarification?
I'd like some further clarification because to get to that 5% level, we need about another $14,000. I found 12. I found 12,000. So, what's important here? You know, I heard somebody suggest taking some money off of the administration side. You know, I mean, I know that's hard, but you know what? You've got to put it back where responsibility is. I totally get that.
I have an suggestion. If I'm not setting out toes by suggesting it. But we had talked about before the run club being upside down very much so. And the reason we have a revalue of swim team is because there's only one swim team. There is no run clubs that services offered in the community. Is it possible to... I heard someone say Curtis can help withdraw team practice or something else. And then that way, you're not doing the run club and having those fees associated with that salary. I think it's $6,000, $1,000. Is that a possibility?
Let me look here real quick. I can tell you just talked about how much you save. You've got $5,200 in running club coach plus about 14% for payroll taxes, which is going to be about $700,000. So, call it, start cutting another $700,000, call it $6,000 in running club cost. And then you have running club revenue is $3,000. So, you've got to save $3,000 if you choose to shut down the program.
Yeah, and Lori talked about not doing that.
I really don't think you should take it out of that youth instructor program.
Administration.
I don't know about administration. Yeah, that's where I focus on is administration.
Your, the problem is that you know the overall operation of the place. And when one has a suggestion, you come back to why it doesn't work. But I don't think we have enough knowledge to sort of say this corner isn't important. That's your job. And I think we're being asked to do your job. One of the things that came up a long time ago was if you have swim coaches that are certified lifeguards, then you could cut the lifeguards at the time, or maybe just have one lifeguard on at the time that all...
No, no, we already talked about that. When MLAC's in the pool, we don't have that.
Definitely. I don't remember it too much detail. But you know, with the masters, for example, you've got two guards and you've got Bill. You know, you've got all sorts of people going around.
We talked about that last week, too.
Yes, it's just possible ways of cutting money.
I don't remember the cashiers, are they certified on all lifeguards?
No, no.
Would that be a possibility?
I'd rather hire a person that's just on their cashier focus. You know, we can get them trained, while they're here, we can get them trained as certified first aid. That's, that's an ongoing process that just...
I don't want to throw them out there. I know people just at times share some stuff.
What's happening here? People come up with vague memories of ideas of how we might have done it. You immediately come back with why it won't work. But the problem is, we've got to find out how to make it work. You know, we've got to find something. And if we're shooting in the dark, and we hit a place that really is not a good place to hit because of the way you organize it, I don't mind that. You're the one that's got to tell us how you see priorities for cutting to 5,000. My best shot is to not put any more permanent positions in here except the head coach and you. And you have the pool guy as a full-time person now, too. But no more of those.
It already was when I got here.
Well, that's fine.
And I'm being paid about the same thing that management supervisor was getting when I got here, too.
So... You know, I really couldn't care. I didn't, you know, I don't pretend to know the minutiae, and I don't want to, because I'm a volunteer. But what I do want is I want to make sure that this is something that is balanced. We've got to do that. And so, I can give you ideas, but they're not good ideas. But if you keep coming back telling me why they're not good, and you have no ideas yourself on how to cut it, we're not going to get there.
Okay, I think that you've heard all there is to hear from the board. And we'll meet back on Monday, 26th. What's that?
I can't be here on Monday at 6:00.
When can you be here?
I could be here maybe by 8:00.
PM?
Yeah. What time's the meeting?
You put it at 7:00.
I put it at 7:00. Well, maybe we could meet at 5:00.
I can do 5:00.
With this weather, the water company's become a little bit more significant than it was a few days ago. So, we have an urgent meeting.
5:00 PM?
5:00 PM. I'll do it, I'll cover it, I'll try and...
Again, I'll have to talk to Sean.
And Bill, just to clarify, are you going to use the $534,878 salaries and wages that we discussed last time for the 5%?
Are you looking at the...
I'm looking at the last number 3. That you may have, I think it was number 3 from the last time.
Yes.
Well, it was 522, and you cut 12, so we've got 534.
Yeah, exactly. It was 534. Well, I think what I'm hearing is that $9,000 was back to the youth.
Well, you know, you get to make the call. You really do. I don't, I'm just saying, anytime safety's involved with small children, that could go badly.
I agree.
Okay, moving on. Think they have any agenda dates for next year's meeting? Do we have some proposed, or was that Sean was going to do that?
I think Sean was going to do that. It's normally a resolution. We can do that resolution.
I move to we meet on the 3rd Thursday of every month, except is it November or October? We'll meet on the 2nd. November? Except November, we'll meet on the 2nd, please roll it. Okay.
At 2nd, Ben?
Go ahead, Amber.
Hi.
Hi.
So, there'll be a resolution to sign. There has to be one. There has to be one. By the law, so that'll be signed in December, okay?
Yeah, well, we do it on the 25th. We did it in this meeting, we're just signing what we passed. 3rd Thursday of every month, except November, and it's on the 2nd Thursday of November.
Okay. Do business, there is none. How about comments?
I have one.
You're a protector.
I have a comment. I was hoping the whole commission would be here for this. But I certainly don't want to crass stand and make a big production out of it. But I'll be given my resignation. And I'll give you my 30 days, like my contract says. 21st of December will be my last day. Some of you are aware I've had some health problems that really laid me out in September. And I was thinking about making this move then, but it became a little more manageable. Some of you are also aware of my family's, pretty much had enough of all of this about six months ago. That's manageable, too. But last week's meeting pretty much made up my mind. And I love working for the taxpayers. I find it an honor and a privilege to work for the taxpayers and to do my best to serve them. What I find here is that I'm reporting to a commission as a body that is dysfunctional and that is too focused on one program. And no matter what I've done to help support that program, there's no motion, there's no movement on the part of this commission to acknowledge what the taxpayers really want and to even make the slightest move to figure in the taxpayers. So, at this point...
I'm sorry, please, please.
No, I'm sorry, I was just sworn at by a member of the public here now. Do not speak to me that way.
I'm sorry, can you guys please step outside?
I think this woman needs to be told not to swear in the public meeting thing.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you. Okay, I have David. Would you like to speak?
Well, you know, actually, I think I'm going to save it.
Thank you. Okay, then.
What's your...
Sure.
Figures take 5013C. We need some more money. I forget to do something to get the paperwork taken care of, so we can take donations to be used as needed. Will be pleased, matching fund donations for corporations.
5013C, is that formed, is it the Friends of the Pool?
Not Friends of the Pool, again, well, as I say, however it has to work out, so we can get donated money and it can be written off on a tax or for anybody that wants to donate.
Is there one formed, though, already?
As I say, no, we don't have it in existence.
You need money to do that.
No, 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 we need it for the district.
Right.
The school districts that I've worked with, they don't even have one. They have a form that they fill out, but it's really not... And it's acceptable to the IRS, but it's something we, the district, does not have.
Right.
So, we should get something official.
As soon as I'm no longer commissioner, I'm trying to try and put some momentum in that direction. There's a lady that I've been trying to work with, but I can't do that as a commissioner, to move that forward and do some good for the community and put on some of that money. And I know a lot of grant money that's just waiting for a body to be set up. So, thank you. Did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say something about philosophically what was discussed tonight. I'm an MLAC parent, been paying for four years dues. I understand it's an expensive proposition. But to me, as a parent, it's the best deal in town, $65 a month. And I would hate to see us cut salaries of people who do it to keep my costs artificially up. I can afford to spend, you know, 10, 15, 20% more. I know everybody can, but most of the people I know on the swim team can. And I would hate to see us keep my costs artificially low and cut people's salaries as a result of that. As I said, I don't know if we could come up with a mechanism where people can afford it, can be accommodated somehow. But I can certainly afford more. It's the best deal in town. I pay $100 a month for using classes for two hours of instruction. Here, I pay $65 a month for 30 hours or 40 hours of instruction. And I understand and appreciate the idea of keeping it less expensive for people. But I don't want to do it at the expense of people's salaries.
Thank you for sharing that perspective, I appreciate it.
We didn't reset 10%.
And what?
And in the proposed budget, we're up 10%.
The past we're on right now is 10. Last week it was 15, now it's 10.
Okay, final comments or questions from the commissioners?
I just want to thank you for your time. I think you did an outstanding job. And I've heard a lot of feedback from the community, being outside of the swim team. I haven't heard a lot of bad things said yet about you or the new coach at all. And I've appreciated working with you, and you've done a great job. And I'm very, very sorry to see that somehow we, as a commission, have let you down. And I hope that we're you go, that happiness and peace.
Thank you very much. I wish you success. Thank you for your work.
Okay, so, the next meeting is, well, the next regular meeting is Thursday, December 19th, 2013, 7:00 PM here. And David will be sworn in at that time. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, no, the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.